I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have Reverend Dan Phillips here.
Here I am.
There's quite an entrance. So lead us into invocation.
Let's pray.
What an entrance.
Let's pray. Father, we are here in this building this afternoon as businesses to be conducted as hundreds and hundreds of students, whether they're looking forward to it or not. School's starting.
Yes.
And so, Father, may everything that is done by this board and the staff, the people in this building, Father, may their hearts' passion be to receive the children of this county, to receive them into our public education system, and to, Father, to nurture them.
Yes.
And, Father, mature them, and help them, Father, to learn not just how to be students, but, Father, help them to learn how to be young men and young women that will leave our school system and go out into a world, and, Father, make their mark in this world with what they have learned through our school system. So, Father, as this board and this staff have accepted the stewardship that has been placed upon them for all the resources at their disposal to do just that, Father, I ask that you answer, that you grant their earnest plea to know how and to know what and to have the courage to do, all within their means, as you guide them to receive these students. And, Father, we ask this in Jesus' name.
Jesus.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend Phillips.
Thank you.
We'll start our presentations today with Healthier U.S. School Challenge Award banners to be presented to James A. Long Elementary School and Mosley Elementary School, and if Nikki Hawthorne would come up.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and School Board. I'm excited today to be able to present or have a guest with us to present the awards today. We have Travis Knight, who is a Program Accountability Specialist with the Department of Agriculture, and he'll be here presenting to four schools these awards, and we call it the HUSK Award, and this is a U.S. State Department of Agriculture, Healthier U.S. School Challenge, and I'll let Travis go ahead and come on up and present the awards and talk about what this really means for the schools that are receiving them today.
That's great. Welcome, Travis.
Thank you. Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
It is afternoon. Yes, it is afternoon.
Yes, it is.
The United States Department of Agriculture, Healthier U.S. Challenge, Smarter Lunchroom Initiative is a volunteer certification initiative that recognizes schools that demonstrate a commitment to advocating for healthier school environments through the promotion of nutritious school meals and physical activity. It is a four-year certification and was adopted under the Let's Move Initiative in 2010. It involves a monetary incentive and recognition at four levels: bronze, silver, gold, and gold with distinction.
Ooh.
Okay? Gold with distinction.
Go ahead.
It is completed through an application process and requires collaboration between the Food and Nutrition Service Department, administrations, teachers, and wellness champions within each school, and often requires months of behind-the-scenes planning and preparation. So it does take a while before this actual becomes what it is. It helps reinforce and recognize the importance of physical activity, physical education, good nutrition, and the presence of nutrition education in our schools. Because all awardees of, excuse me, of this certification have surpassed minimum meal service requirements and have excelled in nutrition, education, physical education, and other areas of school wellness promotion and food service management, it is my privilege to present these prestigious awards to the following schools, and as I call your school, your name, please come and stand. Thank you. Kelly Smith Elementary School, silver level; Principal Tracy Taylor; Cafeteria Manager, Michelle Gigan.
Why Tracy?
Middleton Bernie Elementary School, silver level; Principal Joe Theobald; Cafeteria Manager Ruth Harvey. James A. Long Elementary School, bronze level; Principal Mary Beth Hetstrom; Cafeteria Manager Teresa King. And Mosley Elementary School, bronze level; Principal Sarah Jean McDaniel; and Cafeteria Manager Sharon Smith. Each bronze-level school has earned a $500 monetary award, and silver-level, a $1,000 monetary award from USDA. Schools are awarded a banner and a plaque for display from the U.S., from the United States Department of Agriculture, as well as recognition from the USDA Team Nutrition website. Schools will receive a certificate and a banner from the Florida Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services. It is my pleasure to congratulate to all of you a job well done. Let's give them a round of applause.
Sherman, you gonna get in the picture?
And we're not gonna take a picture.
Okay.
If I can get you all to come in so that you're about to sit there with me.
Where are you at? At Lamar?
Lamar. He being silly.
Mark, I mean.
Everyone look at me and one, two, three. Perfect.
Thank you.
Why she coming?
He want both Nick.
Oh.
Mark and. Our next presentation will be by Reece Ziegler about the Florida Partnership, and Renee Huff will introduce.
Good afternoon, Board. Today, it's a pleasure to welcome our partners from the Florida Partnership. Today, we're going to be hearing from Brian Barnes, who's the Senior Director of the Florida Partnership for Minority and Underrepresented Student Achievement, and also Reece Ziegler, who is the Director and who I work closely with. So today, I'd like to introduce them, and Brian's gonna wow you.
Wonderful.
No pressure. Thank you so much. Superintendent Certancy, thank you for having us, Board members. We're excited about the opportunity to share with you today, so I'll get started with some ideas. First of all, I have to tell you, I'm here because I'm the Senior Director, but the person who does all the work to make the things we're gonna show happen is Reece Ziegler. She's sitting down right there, so when she called me and said, hey, will you come do this, I said, why would someone want to hear from me when you do that? She said, well, you have the title, so you come do the job. So I tried to get her to take this job, but she didn't want it. She decided she'd let me have it. So so excited to be here. I do work for the Florida Partnership for Minority and Underrepresented Student Achievement. It's a lot to say, but it's a hard thing to vote against, so we like that. It is a state-legislated program, and the work that we do is about helping more different kids get ready. So each year, the grant is voted on by the legislature. This is the 20, no, 19th year. We're almost at our 20-year anniversary. So the partnership was established in around the year 2000 by Jeb Bush and the legislature based on the idea that there are lots of kids who have potential that don't have the opportunity to get ready. So as you might imagine, when the partnership first got started, it was in areas like Tampa, Miami, Jacksonville, where you would have high minority populations, also high poverty. But about 10 years ago, Commissioner Smith, Eric Smith, when he was Commissioner of Education, decided that rural students also could be underserved by geography, just by the economy of scale in a rural district and the opportunities that aren't there for our best and brightest students. So the opportunity was to join up with the three rural consortia. We've had an opportunity to do that over the last four years, I guess, pretty closely. And so we've been working with NEFAC, obviously, here in town, which we love, and Patrick Winack and Dr. Winack and how great he is, and he was at Levy with us before, so he knew a lot about the program when he went there. I'm from the Panhandle, so I'm over in, right between Panama City Beach and Destin, if you guys want to come visit. It is lovely. But I'm over there, so I work with the Panhandle Area Educational Consortium, and then, obviously, down in the south, we have HECC, the Heartland Area. So we work with all three rural consortia, and they're great partners to us. What they've done is help us better understand how to serve your needs. So I'm a simple man. The partnership's a simple process. We have three things we're trying to do: get ready, get in, get through. When you hear me talk about college in this context, I want you to think about anything that puts you in a living wage, any sort of post-secondary education, anything that you can do that provides a certificate or a job or puts you on a path to further education. So in rural districts, we certainly understand that there are a lot of kids who have aspirations and all sorts of things. We want to be sure that we're preparing them for all those things. So the first thing is get ready, right? How do we approve access to rigorous coursework and reduce the information gap for parents? First-generation parents, lots of those in our rural districts, how do we reduce that information gap? The second one is get in, right? How can you get into the college that you want to or the program that you're interested in? How do you get yourself prepared so that you're qualified? And then the last one is get through, right? Because that's sort of where we missed the boat. When I was an educator, when I was a student, I was on the general track. Anybody was on the general track in high school? There was the college bound, and there was vocational, then there was general. Where was I going? Generally, nowhere, probably. So what we decided and what really has had to happen is it's not about getting in, because getting in's not good enough. Some of us who have college-age students know this. Getting in is not getting through, right? If a doctor's about to do heart surgery on me and I look on the wall and I see their acceptance letter to Johns Hopkins, I'm glad that they have that. I would prefer, before she cranks up the saw, to see her diploma, right? Because, again, getting in is not getting through. So we want to be sure that we don't just get the kids ready to enter, but we also have them with the skills to complete the type of training. So how does the Florida Partnership help support Putnam County's mission? And again, I want to tell you, all these resources that you see in place are related to your strategic plan. We don't come in here with goals and ideas that are our own. What we try to do is find the resources we have that match up to the plan you already have. These are not new initiatives for your teachers. These are initiatives that were already in place by the state. So how can we best help support? So we sort of have a menu that we pick from, and you guys have picked a lot off the menu, so we're excited and glad Reece is good like that. She makes sure she hoards all the good stuff for the NEFAC area over here. But we do offer the PSAT and SAT suite, and I'll go over that in just a second. That has Khan Academy along with it, and again, I'll talk about that. You have a strong Avid program here that the Florida Partnership is heavily involved in funding, so we're excited about continuing that, and I'll talk about that at the very end, because we have some exciting news that is gonna expand what we're doing with Avid here. Also, trainings for your district leadership. You had a great turnout. Renee was there, and a bunch of others of you were there for the district leadership training, where we bring district and school-level leaders together to talk about readiness with other rural districts, so they can get ideas and share ideas, and we bring in a lot of really good speakers. So that was an amazing event. Middle-level colloquium, so we have a middle-school meeting where we have middle-school talk about readiness. Sometimes we forget how important middle-school is in the readiness process, and with the migration of high-school courses down to the middle-school level, the new gatekeeping is happening, really, in middle-school. So we want to be sure we're addressing that. AP Symposium for AP Teachers to help them get better at what they do, summer institutes for AP teachers, a lot of AP things, mentoring, capstone, all of those are things that you'll talk about in the future, and some of the things that you're working on now, so I won't get too deep into that. And then at the very end, the last thing, which is most important to me, is district-based and consortium-based professional development. So when we come to training your district, we don't come blindly. We don't just come with some canned thing that we work on. We study your data. We work with your team. We make sure that we know what it is you're trying to accomplish, and then we, what we like to say, my philosophy is, you know the schools, we know the tools. So if you can help us understand the political background, because it's always that, and the context that goes around that, then we can help you get where you're going. So I will tell you this: right now, this is a picture of the state of Florida. This is the, in 10th grade, the state of Florida pays for a college readiness assessment for all 10th-grade students in all districts in the state. So the blue places on the map represent where the PSAT NMSQT, the PSAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test, is the test of choice. There are only three districts left that don't use the PSAT as their test in 10th grade, even though it's free and they could choose. And the reason that we think you choose, we believe you choose, and we believe the rest of them choose, is because we can help you not only increase student outcomes on the SAT that increases their ability to have better options as they come out, but also we can drive school and district grades. So I want to show you a little bit about how we feel like we're able to help both support the work that we do for the individual students and also support the school and district in these times of accountability. It's important to keep your name out of the paper, if you can, so that's good. So the College Board has a system. I won't spend a ton of time, but what we've done is we revamped it. So the SAT that you think you know about is not the SAT that exists now. It was rebuilt when the standards for the state were replaced, and so those standards match pretty closely to the standards that this is based on. And then we have personalized practice through Khan Academy. If you're not familiar with Khan Academy, one of the most amazing resources for education on the planet, so we are pleased to be partnering with them. And then opportunities for college and opportunities for career. I don't have a ton of time to go into that, but I'll kind of brush over it in my next few slides. So this is how it sets up, and in your district, if I'm not mistaken, you give the PSAT in eighth grade, PSAT again in ninth grade, then in 10th grade, they take the state-sponsored test, 11th grade, they take the SAT School Day on a Wednesday during school.
Yes.
So they have all these opportunities, and what we're doing is we're developing a data chain, both for your college and career readiness and for your FSA accountability piece. So that's what's been going on, and maybe, how many years do you figure we've been doing it all the way from ninth grade? Is it maybe three or four years?
Yeah.
Maybe four? This may be our first full cohort that's gone ninth, 10th, 11th, 12th, with it. So anyway, we're beginning to build that data chain, and there's lots of cool data, and Reece will come back and do that meeting for you later, because I don't want to do math in public. But you can see, these are the benefits of the PSAT and the SAT: opens doors to colleges, builds skills over time, connects students to scholarships, increases the likelihood of AP and college credit, inspires productive practice, and that's what I would say with Khan Academy. You'll see it's not a test prep site. You're gonna see a site that provides individualized practice on the skills that are tested on the FSA and the SAT. So why is it important? Well, first of all, you think of the PSAT, and you think about the National Merit Scholarship, right? And that's a huge thing. Have you ever had one in your school?
Oh, we've had many.
I love it. I love it. When you have one, it's so rare, so if you've had many, that's great. It's so rare, it's such a difficult scholarship to get. It's a merit-based scholarship. It's just that. I mean, the very best and the brightest students go at it for that. But what people fail to realize is $160 million in scholarships that are also related to the PSAT that aren't national merit, and they're all around underserved and traditionally marginalized populations. So you can see the Jack Kent Cooke Foundation. They cover students of poverty. We have a student from Okeechobee that we just had at one of our meetings talking about the scholarship he received from them, based on both his ability and his need. Then you can see up there, there's the Hispanic, what is it? I'm missing my names here. Oh, the Hispanic Scholarship Fund, UNCF is in there, American Graduate Center, Indian Graduate Center, so lots of things that these students do well on these scores that they can receive scholarships and help, and we know everybody needs that. So how do we do that with this test? So tests, I don't like tests. I'll be quite honest with you. I work for the SAT, and I'm not a big fan of tests, because they take instructional time, and they don't necessarily yield data that's useful. So if it's not yielding data you need, why are you giving the test? And, you know, the state makes a student in some cases, but if it doesn't, I'm not, I have no interest in Putnam County continuing to test unless Putnam County is using that data effectively, and that's what you're doing at this point. But what we're seeing is, and this is a study that was done last year through Khan Academy. So Khan Academy, again, provides, once the students have taken the PSAT 8-9, it provides an individualized roadmap for those students to prepare if they take it later. Every time they do, it continues to add layers and layers of information about what they're good at and what they struggle with. So what the research shows, last year, they did a study of 250,000 students around the country, and of those students, the students who took the SAT twice, they took the test and took it again, they had a 60-point increase in general, just because they took it again, they took it later, they had done some things, they were more familiar. If the students spent six hours on Khan Academy, their average increase was 90 points, not six hours a week or six hours a day. If they spent 20 hours, their average increase was 115 points. 115 points on your SAT will change your life. It may get you a Bright Future Scholarship. It might put you in a position to get from the local community college to a university, or from one university to a more prestigious university. So last year, at that same time, in Florida, this are students that weren't necessarily in that same study, 10,382 students around the state increased their scores by at least 200 points. 200 points is huge, and I'll kind of show you what that means. So this is what it looks like for the state of Florida. You can see, this is SAT scores. The scores between 800 and 990 are 37%. So if you add 100 or 200 points to 990, you can look on the left-hand side, you can see the Medallion Scholarships. The Medallion Scholarships at 1170, and 1290 is the full Florida Academic Scholars. So if you take those students that are in the 32% in the 1100 to 1190 range, and you add 100 or 200 points there, you're seeing kids get different levels of scholarship. If you go into that next row of 37%, you're seeing kids who weren't scholarship students becoming scholarship students. So again, we can help students get opportunities that they don't have through the FSA, but I also wanted to, I mean, through the SAT and how it relates to the FSA, but I also wanted to talk about another way that we're affecting work on the ground. Now, this is something that's a little different. We're providing, and we did last year for the first time, I guess you guys are buying it, but we're training you for it, so let me make sure we're not providing this, but we are, is the non-reportable SAT for our students who are seniors who need a reading score. So there are tons of kids who need a reading score to graduate. We look at them. I'm a former principal, so I've stood in the room with those same kids who've been to school every day, done everything, taken reading class 15 times, and I gotta tell them to tell Grandma to cancel her plane ticket, that it's not gonna happen. So to have an opportunity to do something about that, we thought was important. So the students in your district have the opportunity this fall, and they did last spring, to take a non-reportable 50% extended-time reading test. Last year, you had 27 of the 56 students who took that non-reportable test, who actually got scores that allowed them to graduate. So over 50% of the students in your district, and that's a pretty good average for the state, what we saw. And that was without the intensive work that I think we'll do this year, beginning in October or, you know, August, really. So we might see even more of that coming forward, but your schools and your teachers and your leadership did such an amazing job, saving some kids from, you know, what really is a waste of human capital.
Well, research indicates that the more kids, the more times a child takes a test, the more skills they develop on that, and they could academically and IQ-wise be, you know, blue-ribbon scholars, you know, top scholars, and take the test one time and not do well, but if they take it several times, they learn where to take the shortcuts and what to do, and it does, the points add up, and it makes a big difference. I saw a young lady, a local girl, and I won't call her name on Facebook the other day, asking for prayer, because she was an honor scholar, but now she's in college, and she just, to take a test, she's so upset, you know, and it's all just knowing how to do it and taking it, so.
And learning the format, right?
Makes a difference, and as a principal, I see exactly what you're talking about, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. So it's important that we're able to do that, and again, that's gonna affect your school and district grades too, so that's a great thing for the district and a great thing for students. So we're excited to be able to support that, and Khan Academy will be a big part of that. We're doing some trainings that, around the state with different districts that are really working hard with their reading teachers on this, so it's a good thing. So these are the test dates, just so you know. Wednesday, October 10th is the first test date, and the scores will come back to those students, so they would know by November 5th if they pass that test. That means we could move them out of their reading class and change their schedule pretty quickly, and really build back our electives that are missing, that these kids need for their career and technical pursuits or other things that they want to do. And then also, quick turnaround on that March 6 test. You can see, it comes back to the students on April 1st. I don't know which test you all pick in the spring. Most districts pick one, maybe two dates that they'll use in the spring, but again, that was important to me, because really, my heart is where those kids are, and I want to make sure that you guys are aware what a great job your team is doing with that. So I'm gonna move out of assessment and testing like that and quickly tell you some of the supports we provide for advanced academic coursework. So what we really believe is that without third-party evaluated rigor, it's very difficult to tell whether your students, particularly in a small rural district, can compete with their peers from other places. You don't have the same capacity to go, okay, these two schools are four miles apart, and we can, you know, kind of know this teacher's worked here. You're kind of isolated in that way. So one of the things we really encourage is that we work toward getting more different kids ready earlier, and the problem for us is, and if I'm running out of time, somebody wave at me. The problem for us is that when you, when you have a funnel of information, when you have a funnel of students that's very tight at the bottom in sixth grade, and it's just your best and brightest students, which many of our districts, I've not worked here, so I'm not claiming that about you. I'm sure you're special and different, and it's not always the same here, but in the districts that I work with in the Panhandle, we see a lot of students who aren't even enrolled in a course that would allow them to ever compete with their more resourced peers. So if I start off as a very resourced student in kindergarten, and I start as, another person starts as an under-resourced student, and they stay in separate classes and they're trained separately on different things, how will you ever? Where are the on-ramps? So what we're really working with is, how do we build on-ramps for our students who came to school and maybe, I hate to use the term, but I'll use it, in the buzzards-reading group versus the bluebirds? So how do I get from the buzzards to the bluebirds from four years old to 18 years old, if nobody's building ramps that are consciously built there for me? So the wider our funnel is in sixth grade, the more advanced students who make it to high school. So we got, you know, one of the philosophies we talk about is every sixth grader's going to Harvard. I don't know that they are, but Lord, don't let it be my fault that I didn't program them for them to be there, because I've been, I actually spoke at my old middle school one time, and I was not voted most likely to return to speak to my faculty. So I just, you know, when I had advanced degrees, I wanted to wear them around my neck, hey, y'all, look, somebody showed up. But it is important. So why engage students in rigorous coursework? I'll kind of give you an idea. Alan Page said it best, Alan Page from the Minnesota Vikings, also from the Minnesota Supreme Court, said, "Without preparation, opportunity is an empty promise." So when we see students around the state, and we see this happen a lot, students who dodge rigor to get a Bright Future Scholarship and then receive that scholarship in their home bag and groceries by December, not because they weren't smart enough, because they never saw the deep end of the pool, we believe that school is a place where students are supposed to fail. If you have a straight-A student, how do we know what they need to work on? We're not testing those kids at the level we need to, and I don't mean testing, I mean challenging those students at the level that we need to. So how do we put them in a position where they're stretched beyond their comfort zone, so if they do fail, they have the beautiful backup of being in a small rural community where people who sit in the bleachers and the pews with them will lean over and say, hey, your kid didn't do the homework, could you help me out here? If you've ever tried to call college and get them to answer your questions about your students who you pay for, they will not, right?
They will not.
They will not. They will tell you it's illegal, and they will hang up on you. They will only call you back if you forget to send a check. So this is why, this is why our school system is so important, because we have all these support systems in place. We have counselors and teachers and all of the great people who are going to catch a kid when they're falling off and put him back on there, but if they never fail while they have a safety net, if they fail for the very first time when they're gone off to college, it's too late, because then they're just floundering. They just think, I don't know how to do it. And so how do we do that? I went to a graduation, again, in the Panhandle, nothing to do with you. There were 25 valedictorians in this one school, and the school only had like 500 students in it. So how can there be 25 kids who think they're going to be the best student that ever walked on the new campus they go on? It can't be true. So how do we, how do we do that? So here's some data that backs this. It's kind of hard to read, so I'll just read it out loud for you. So this is time to degree on a four-year degree scale. So these are, this is the, how, the percentage of graduation in four years, right? So percentage of students with varying AP and non-AP experiences who earn a bachelor's degree within four years. Not six or seven or eight, like my son wants to do, just four. So if a student neither takes dual enrollment nor AP, they take no really advanced coursework like that, they have an 11% likelihood of graduating on time in four years. If a student takes an AP course and makes an exam score of just a one, that's the lowest score. So this is how AP works. If a student takes a course, they get a high school grade. At the end, they take an exam, and that exam is scored on a scale of one to five. If the score is a three, four, or a five, it's generally considered a college-credit-bearing score. A one or two doesn't get you college credit, but it also doesn't hurt your high school grade. A 1 or 2 doesn't get you college credit, but it also doesn't hurt your high school grade. So, that's sort of how this works, and that's how we can tell if these students who are in Palatka can face off against students from Pittsburgh, because we can see them on the same test, under the same circumstances, on the same day. So, if a student's score is just a 1 on an AP exam, they have just doubled their likelihood at 21% of graduating in four years. They didn't get college credit, but they're gonna graduate in four years with a likely because they've seen the deep end of the pool, because they've stretched beyond their comfort zone, and they knew what to do. Think about this, when you put kids in a hard class, and they're your straight-A students, they freak out. They don't know what to do, they co-tell their parents on you, mostly, right? What we need them to do is form study groups. What we need them to do is get better at asking the professor for help. What we need them to do is practice all the skills that they would need of self-agency to be able to solve a problem. What do you do when it doesn't come easy? That's the biggest question that our students need to be able to answer, because information is plentiful, right? The question is, how can you use it in powerful ways? So, you can see, if a student takes a dual enrollment course, you're a little bit better, you're at 24%, so you're still a little bit over double likely to graduate than you would be with neither. If a student makes an AP exam a score of 2 or higher, that's a 32%, like, so almost three times as much as not taking. If they make a 3 or higher, it quadruples that, and then fours and fives are about 50/50 that they're gonna graduate on time. So, we know this to be fact, so what our goal is, to get more different kids engaged in third-party evaluated rigor, and to support that, not just to throw that at your teachers and go, "Good luck," but to start in middle school and work our way forward, maybe start even before middle school, and work our way forward into a position where we can do that. So, the AP program has tons of resources and supports that we're gonna put in place for your team as they're interested, and, and we certainly will work with you on whatever form of rigor that you want to put out there, but we're really good at AP, because we're the College Board. So, we will, we'll leave it to you with that, but there's a whole new set of resources, and these resources were specifically designed to help teachers differentiate in a more diverse classroom. It gives students tools that they can use at home, it gives teachers resource plans and lesson plans and diagnostic quizzes, so that they have opportunities to see if the kids are getting it, if they're not, and then puts them in the right bucket, so that then we can individualize. Okay, here are the four kids who don't understand, you know, Reconstruction period 18, you know, whatever, I don't want to start throwing off dates, I'll say the wrong years. But anyway, they don't understand this part, let's all work on that together. And then the last thing I want to tell you is, we're not just gonna try to work with you to get more rigor and just say, "Oh, well, good luck, put in some harder classes," because that's not how it goes. Good try, though. We're really involved with Avid, so we are very good partners with Avid, we work with them pretty, pretty closely. I think Phil's in Putnam County, or maybe he's moving now.
He changed to Kelly.
Oh, I hate, I hate that Phil's gone, but Kelly is awesome, so that's good news. Yeah, she's really good. So, Avid, if you don't know about it, advancement via individual determination, a wonderful program, gives kids college experiences before they get there, teaches study skills, so all the things that are in the Avid program are skill sets that our students need to be able to be self-sufficient, and to be able to be self-agents when they need to do something. So, we think you can't just put them in hard classes and not give them the study skills and the habits and the, and the vision too, because I think Avid's awesome when it takes the kids to the Gator Encounter, and they go to college campus, because if you can't see it, you can't be it. But if I see myself walking around at the University of Florida, all of a sudden, "Hey, I might be able to do this," you know, "This looks, these kids look like me, I met somebody who looks like me, and came from the same area as me, fantastic." So, we do that, we have it now at Crescent City High School, at Interlochen, at Palatka, at C.H. Price Middle, at Robert H. Jenkins Middle, Miller Middle School, C.L. Turner Over, C.L. Overturf 6th Grade Center, I went to a 6th Grade Center, that was fun. And then, what, to be honest with you, I was accosted at our district leadership training, so Ree and Renee got together, and they, "Cam, we need some more Avid money." So, right now, I think we're working on a plan to extend Avid to maybe an elementary school, which we've never done.
We actually have school-wide implementation at Mosley.
Yeah, fantastic, so we're excited to be a part of that. We've not done that anywhere else, so we, we understand that that's gonna be a really cool experiment for us. So, to be honest with you, we love working with Putnam County, you're progressive, you're interested in your kids, you guys are working so hard, I love meeting your teachers, your leadership is amazing, but what we want to do is make sure you know we're as committed as you are to making sure every single student who walks out of here has the opportunity to own their future, to make choices about what they will do and, and where they will do it, and to bring money back into Putnam County from abroad. I live in Walton County, Florida, but I bring that New York money down and spend it at Walmart. There's plenty of people who work remotely, there's all sorts of jobs and opportunities that didn't exist before, so we want to be sure your students who are headed to Harvard get there, and we want to be sure your students who don't think they can graduate realize they can, and that they can be useful parts of our community. So, without any, anything else, I'll close, and I can answer any questions you have.
Well, without, without, you know, knowing that you live in Walton County, you're, you know, we, we kind of know, we know a lot of people in Walton County, back in too, but you mentioned earlier about how we can compare our scores to kids in Pittsburgh and other places, and that takes you back to the examples of the old National norm reference testing, which we don't really do like we ought to anymore, and the state has fallen into this, let's declare failing schools, and see how kids in Florida, in these rural counties, fare against these kids that live on the coastal areas, where you got, you know, 100 miles of oceanfront property, you know, to tax, and used adult loan taxes to get more help to kids, but be that as it may, I really think it's a, a good thing, it's focused on the children that, that need to, that, that may have the IQ and have the ability, but would score poorly because they don't take tests.
Or underserved.
Underserved, and anyway, it'll, it's, it's what it says it is, I like it.
Thank you so much. Now, we're excited, yeah, and Walton County's interesting, because you have the coast that has this huge base, and then you've got those northern districts, part of the district that are just like this, but, but there's a generator of funding there, so it's harder in places where there's not some big generator of that type of funding. So, that's what we're really committed to, is making sure that our rural communities thrive. So, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, that was awesome. Okay, public hearing. We're going to adopt some policies. We'll start with the adoption of new policy number 5111.03, children and youth in foster care per NEOLA update 17-2.
Madam?
Go ahead, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Amendment to policy number 1242, professional development per NEOLA update 18-1.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion, we adopt the policy.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number 3, amendment to policy number 2120, school improvement per NEOLA update 18-1.
Madam Chairman, go, go ahead, Kathy.
No, no, so move, we approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number 4, amendment to policy 2261, Title I services per NEOLA update 18-1.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number, where, 4, amendment to policy 2261, Title I services per NEOLA update 18-1.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
I think you did that one.
I did, well, that's what I was afraid of.
We'll take the first one.
Okay, so, we'll take the first one. Okay.
She's the chairman, so we have to let her go back through it, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, number 5, amendment to policy 2370.01, virtual instruction.
Go ahead.
Per NEOLA update 18-1.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number 6 is amendment to policy number 3243, professional development per NEOLA update
Move to approve.
Second, go ahead, Sandy got it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries. Number 7, amendment to policy number 5460, graduation requirements per NEOLA update 18-1.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. And number 8, amendment to policy 9130, public complaints per NEOLA update 18-1.
Move to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, public comments, I didn't get any little cards, does anyone need to fill one out so that they can make a comment? Okay, we'll move on now to our consent agenda, I'll start with Ms. Gilliard, do you have anything you would like to pull?
Mine was taken care, thank you.
Mr. Buckles?
No ma'am, I've got all my questions answered in the last few hours.
Ms. Jorgensen. E4, please. E4, and I would like to pull H4, 5, and 6, simply because I would like Ms. France to share some information about these with the public.
And what was that one?
E4 is right.
E4, H4, 5, and 6. H4, 5, and 6.
Madam Chairman, could I also request that you pull for discussion item F3 and item And we'll have people come up and...
Okay, all right, so let me get it, make sure I've got everything. We're going to pull items E4, F3, H3, 4, 5, and 6. Okay, would someone make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda minus items E4.
Second.
F3, H3, 4, 5, and 6.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. So, we'll start with E4.
This is a school guardian agreement, and there are absolutely like no rules at all. First of all, as far as I know, we approved the task force recommendation, number 6,
I mean, I would have to go back and look at my minutes.
It was the task force recommendation that we approved.
We approved it, and I mentioned, I talked to Travis Weaver prior to the meeting, and he said everything's great, so.
Okay, well, here's option number 6, and it says that the guardians will only be at the seven schools we don't have school resource officers at.
But that was, that was amended at that.
So, we didn't approve number 6 then, sorry.
We approved number 6 with an amendment to it, that they can have as many guardians as they want.
And I read, I read the motion that we, that was being approved.
Okay, so we didn't approve the task force recommendation after all.
Yes, we did, we approved number 6 with an amendment to it, it was approved.
With however many?
As many as I deemed necessary.
Who deems necessary, the sheriff?
The sheriff and the superintendent.
Okay, so the board is abrogating its power in this guardian program, because we are supposed to, first of all, we were supposed to sit down the board with the sheriff before July 4th, to let the DOE know how many guardians there are. I still don't really know, I know that one of the news stations, we're told 25 by somebody here, but we are abrogating our responsibility as a board if we don't get involved in this.
I think the correct terminology would be, you're trying to say is abdicating, not ab, abrogating, okay.
I wasn't sure.
All right, I, I would just want to clarify that, okay.
Whatever, we're, we're not doing what we're supposed to do, as far as I'm concerned, we're not, and I'm voting no on this, it's a joke, we have not exercised any of our power as a board with regards to this decision.
Well, thank you. Madam Chairman, I'd like to call for the question. I'd like to make, well, the motion's already on the floor, and we've had a second to, to discuss it, and we've had discussion, can we just call for the vote?
No, we, remember, we pulled this.
Well, I thought she made a motion to, to, okay. I'm, I make a motion that we, that we accept the recommendation for the school guardian agreement.
Second. All in favor?
Can we have, we can't discuss it anymore?
Well, you just discussed it.
No, you interrupted me.
Robert's rules of...
We're not gonna do this today.
Okay, thank you.
We're not gonna do this today.
As a board, as a board member, I can talk, sorry.
Yes, you can, you can, but we're going to be civil to one another.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
What would you like to say, Ms. Jorgensen?
We have a certificate of liability insurance in this agreement, it says we're holding the sheriff harmless, and then he's holding us harmless, so if everybody's harmless, who's gonna be sued? Because that's what this says, we're gonna hold the sheriff harmless, and then it says he's gonna har, hold us harmless, and then there's a certificate of liability insurance, the law says we have to be named on it, and I don't see where we're named on it.
Madam Chairman, under Robert's Rules of Order, we have already, she has discussed prior to the motion being made, and she's had discussion, now she's having more discussion, and...
I don't, I don't mind the discussion, as long as it's done in a civil manner.
Well, she's already said how she's going to, to, she's already discussing how she's gonna vote, so there's really, unless any other board member wants to continue to discuss, we might as well call for the question.
I do, well, let's go ahead. Yeah, and, you know, and I want to hear Charlie's opinion about her concerns.
Well, that's fine, I can go ahead and address the indemnification language.
Okay, thank you.
Under insurance slash indemnification, there were two additional paragraphs that were added that made the indemnification more favorable to the district. And one is, one paragraph deals with the event where a school guardian is acting in the course and scope of their service as a school guardian, in other words, they're trying to stop an active assailant. Another context in the second paragraph is where a school guardian is acting in any other capacity and somehow creates harm somewhere else. Those indemnification paragraphs were submitted to our risk manager, and the contract as a whole was submitted to our insurance carrier, and I have received word from our risk management department that our insurance carrier approves of this contract, and the indemnification language that was spelled out. So, in, in the insurance company's mind, this is a sufficient document for that purpose.
I'm done, I'm, I give up.
You can speak.
Okay.
67 more days.
All right, let's, so we've got a...
Motion in the second.
I called a question.
The question was already called, but go ahead.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, that was E4, so now we will discuss F3.
Madam Chairman, I ask Ms. Odom, should we just come and talk about the financial statement from Putnam Edge, just to bring some items to your attention before you vote on that?
See if I can get this right. These are the financials for the period ending May 31st, 2018, and I want to call your attention that they showed the first positive net position of this fiscal year, positive of $3,668, and basically, this was achieved by the loan forgiveness of $32,000 from the Edge president. But the reason I wanted to look at it is because I knew the school had an, an outlay of almost $73,000 cash in July, the $65,000 down payment, and $7,830 of closing cost. So, of course, I had questions on where that money came from, and if it was going to put them back in a large negative fund equity position. So, I had their accountant send me a draft copy of their June financials, which I got around lunch today. The June financials show, and that's without the effect of the building purchase, puts puts them back into a negative net position of $4,901.88. And I'll have to wait until I get the July financials to see how the building purchase affects them on paper. If the $72,830 was an outright gift, it has no effect. If it's a loan that goes on the books, it'll lower their net position again. Their June financials did show that they had $81,000 of cash in the bank, but they had current liabilities of $84,000. That's how they got in a negative net position. So if they use that money that they had in the bank, that would mean that they spent a big majority of their cash on hand without reducing their current liabilities and that would also put them in a negative net position by a large amount because they didn't have the cash to pay current liabilities. One thing that will help this situation is that on July 26th, the district cut them a check in the amount of $56,244.68 and that was for 1/12 of their FEFP funds based on their projection of 110 students. They'll have lower expenditures in July because they don't have teacher salaries and everything that they have to pay. No teachers on payroll, so that's a plus for them. Their accountant also believes that they will get PICO funds this year and the state did increase the PICO funds for charter schools by almost tripling them. And the accountant believes they'll get around $50,000 this year, but he did, something that concerns me is that he mentioned that the school, he noticed that the school district had not approved their plan yet. So I told him an email that I had not received this plan. In the past, every year I get an email from DOE saying a charter school has submitted their plans. It gives me sign-on information to go in and to look at their plan, be sure it meets the requirements of the law and approve the plan. According to the letter that I have from DOE, the charter's deadline was July 1st of this year to go online and do it and the district's deadline to approve was July 23rd online also. So unless it went to someone new this year, it's always come to me in the past. This hasn't been done yet, so I don't know that, you know, they can count on those PICO funds. And, you know, it was due July 1st and they hadn't purchased the building yet. They didn't purchase the building until July 19th. So I'm not sure if they qualify for PICO funds this year or not. That all remains to be seen. So basically we'll just have to keep an eye on their financials as they come in each month and see how all of this pans out. And it's only coming up and I only wanted to briefly speak about it because I knew of the purchase of the building and I knew they took on a mortgage of the balance $385,000 plus 5% interest. So we'll just keep an eye on things as it comes about. Should receive the July financials. They're supposed to be here by August 20th, but it's never really been on time. So I really don't expect to get them until sometime mid-September, but just wanted to keep everybody in the know.
Is there a possibility that they could have gotten a waiver because they're going into a new?
Oh, the PICO? It's possible. I was just concerned that I haven't seen that and the letter does say.
I'm just hoping that that's what.
It's possible, but their, their letter, which I've kept a copy of, says that the district has to approve them by July 23rd and I haven't received anything, so.
We're not being penalized because we can't approve what's not.
Exactly.
Well, I'm optimistic that, that they'll work it out. I ran into Ms. Freeman the other day and had a discussion and I feel very comfortable that I, I think the majority of the board will do and the superintendent has, we've talked. We'll certainly do whatever we can within reason to try to help them get a waiver or do what is necessary to, to survive in this situation.
That will certainly help them if they get those PICO funds, but just knowing that we have to look at their financials and knowing about the mortgage that they took on and everything, I'm just calling it to your attention as something that we'll keep a closer eye on and everything. It's what I'm supposed to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Rhonda.
Thank you, Superintendent, for bringing that back in this room.
So, a motion for H4?
I make a motion that we approve H4.
That was F.
No, no, F, Jane told me that, F. I'm so sorry. F3, Putnam Edge High School Financial Statement. I'm looking at errors, please.
And there is a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now, we'll talk about H3, H4, and H5.
We'll ask Ms. France to talk about H3 for just a minute.
Yeah, that's.
I'm going to take a rest.
Oh, yeah.
Regarding the.
Yeah, 4, 5, and 6 are the ones.
Articulation agreement.
Yeah, this is important.
You want me to start with H3?
Yes.
There's articulation agreement between St. John's County School District and for Putnam County School District regarding the students who go to First Coast Technical Center. We've done this every year. We have one child currently enrolled for the welding program. We don't have any other students enrolled. The only concern I do have is that we have not seen their plan that they are submitting for their teach-out for the, for the legislature to see what that teach-out program is. And this student is not, is not in this program. He's at the welding program, which is not held on the Hudson Avenue campus. So that's the only thing is currently, we do not have, we do not know what their plan looks like for approval for the state.
So we can put this off until we do know what the plan looks like?
You could, yes ma'am. And this, and the child should be able to start without a problem.
Yes.
And this student can't go to?
So he is already.
That's the city high.
He's, he is a Palaka High School student. He has already completed all certifications at Palaka High School. He is working on his post-secondary certifications.
But didn't we at one time discuss using Palaka High School to teach out that child? Did we ever talk about? Well, it must have been in.
We are not, we don't.
Somebody else.
We don't give that certification. That would be FCTC who has the certification.
Our facility to do that.
They're using, they're using the, the facility out at the.
Bargeport.
Bargeport for that purpose.
And we have used, I believe Renee could speak to this. We've used our facilities before in conjunction with FCTC so that they could do programs like the nursing program.
Right, right.
So.
And the teach-out, I believe the deadline is September 1st.
I believe so.
So as, we should be, we should have knowledge about that date after that point in time and then we can make a better decision about this, maybe in the September meeting.
Okay.
Okay, did you hear all that?
I met with Ms. France, I was, that's why I was right down to the deadline. I met with Ms. France and covered the Emory Riddle stuff. I covered this and, and other, other facets.
We just.
And I heard what she was saying about the articulation.
Make a motion.
I make a motion that we approve H4.
We want to wait until we get their plan.
Well, you needed, we'll let somebody else make a motion because you, you told me to make a motion.
Motion to table item H3. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, I wanted Laura just to spend a minute, two minutes and talk to us about teen engagement.
Do you want to do E4 first, which is Emory Riddle?
Yeah, let's do that one first.
Right.
Yeah, this is so exciting and I wanted the public to be aware of what was going on.
So the principal at QI Roberts, Mrs. Wood, has engaged in a conversation with Emory Riddle, Aeronautical University and she has worked with them to bring in two courses this year. It's Engineering 101 and it's Introduction to Engineering and Unmanned Aircraft Systems for the students at QI Roberts. And so we will be endeavoring with them into getting some certification for our students at QI Roberts.
And now this sounds like it goes along with what we visited, the flagship program we visited at Flagler Palm Coast High School.
And hopes that it could go back with the simulators.
Yes, yes, and it was just amazing.
They had them at St. Augustine High School too.
So, let's, let's make a motion on this. E4?
Approval of E4.
Okay.
I second it.
All, yes, item E4. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
It's H, I'm sorry. It's H.
It's agreement between, is that case to?
I said E4. I wrote it down as E, but it's H.
Confused. I thought it was A. Item H4.
So moving acceptance to item H4.
Second, again.
Okay, all in favor to approving H4?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we'll talk a minute about teen engagement and.
So if you don't mind, I'll put H5 and 6 together.
Yes.
It is a program that we've been using. We started last year at the 8th grades at all of our middle schools, except for QI Roberts and the high schools. And teen engagement is a computer program. It's really a teacher-led program, but all of the resources are online, which is what we're actually paying for, that online access to the resources. It is a reading intervention program for students and it has not just FSA prep, but it also has SAT and ACT prep. So our struggling 8th graders, our struggling 9th through 12th graders are enrolled in this class. Well, in intensive reading classes that use this curriculum to support the learning for students.
And one, and I just wanted to throw this in there. One of the reasons I was so excited about it is because the state has increased the score, the passing score on the SAT or the ACT to be able to use it as a concordance score for the FSA. So this should really help some of our students who are struggling to pass that test to be able to graduate.
And so there are roughly 650, I think I saw in the memo we had, roughly 650 students that we're looking at that will benefit from this program.
From all grade levels.
From all grade levels, yes ma'am.
From all grade levels. Okay.
And the, the Word Attack, which is the second part of teen engagement, it's two different pieces. The Word Attack helps with the phonics and phonemic awareness that we actually are still seeing as an issue with some students and so this is like an add-on to that program to help with those students, what they need.
The multi-syllable word.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Can we approve these two together?
No, we'd better do them separate, I would think. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item, consent agenda item H5, teenage teen engagement, one-source membership.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, go ahead. You go ahead.
Madam Chair, I motion that we approve item H6, teen engagement, one-source membership agreement for Word Attack.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, that's it. And we will move on now to our emergency session. We'll go out of regular session into emergency session. We have some additional items.
Other than the chief.
We've already.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve act after the fact approval to pay Mexican exchange teacher working with migrant education summer program.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve emergency item number 2, a resolution to surplus and convey a school bus to Rhode Harbor Boys Ranch, justification explanation time-sensitive.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We'll go out of emergency session, back into regular session. We have no unfinished business, but we do have some new business discussed. The first item is consensus to advertise new policies, number 5517.02, number 8406, and number 8407 per Neola Updates 18-2, and special release, school safety.
Do we just do roll call or we vote on this?
Say advertise.
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 Advertise?
Advertise.
Consensus to advertise deletion of policy number 7440.01 per Neola Special Release School Safety.
Advertise.
Advertise.
Advertise?
Advertise.
Consensus to advertise amendment to policies 1121.01, number 3121.01, number 4121.01, and number 8340 per Neola Update 17.2.
Advertise.
Advertise.
Advertise?
Advertise.
Number 4 is consensus to advertise amendment to policies 1220, number 2280, number 3128, number 3220, number 6830, number 9800 per Neola Update 18.1.
Advertise?
Advertise.
Advertise?
Advertise.
Number 5, consensus to advertise amendment to policies 1122, 1362, 2260, 2623, 3122, 3362, 4122, 4162, 4362, 5120, 5517, 5517.03, 5610.02, and 6320 per Neola Update 18.2.
18.2. Advertise.
Advertise.
Advertise?
Advertise.
And the last one is consensus to advertise amendment to policies 1213, 3213, 4213, 5112, 5500, 5610.01, 7430.01, 7440, 8405, 8410, and 8420 per Neola Special Release School Safety.
Advertise.
Advertise.
Advertise?
Advertise.
Okay, it's that time of the agenda when we are ready for our board reports. Ms. Jorgensen, do you have anything?
Yes, I just want to give shout-out to Sharon. Noticed that our pol, somewhere on the agenda or somewhere gave us a hint about what the policy was, so we didn't have to open up every single one if we didn't want to and I really appreciate that. I know how much extra work that was and I want to say thank you. And I'd also like to say that in my 12 years as a school board member, I have never, ever felt like I couldn't say what I had on my heart and on my mind. And I was cut off today, I feel like. I had about seven other questions about this contract with the sheriffs that we're going to have 25 or however many armed people in our schools, armed civilians, in our, armed employees in our school. But I have never felt like I've been cut off before in my life and ask Andrea Messina how she feels about the way I've been treated today, seriously. Ask her to look at the meeting and tell, tell you what she thinks. It's deplorable. I can't wait to be off this board. That's all I can tell you all. I'm done.
Mr. Buckles, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Well, I'm sorry she feels that way, but Robert's Rules of Order is very clear and you should make a motion when an item comes forth in a second and then you have discussion. And, and the discussion should be in a, in a fairly reasonable fashion. I mean, I don't think a conversation should go on for one hour by one employee without, or one board member without others interviewing or interjecting. And if they state they're not in favor of something and how they're going to vote, then that, that makes another whole different set of circumstances. And I'm very sorry that Ms. Jorgensen doesn't, is not happy with that. But other than that, I feel, you know, I've seen, if it can happen, I've seen it happen in board members, in board meetings and, and I've been cut off at my time and being school superintendent.
I've listened to you go on and on and on. When I did this and when I was 6110, you've never been cut off. Please. I'm through. Sorry. I'm done. I really, I'm done.
Ms. Gilliard?
Alrighty, just want to again commend the schools that were recognized by the US Department of Agriculture, Health, Healthier US Food Challenges. Think I saw Kelly Smith, James A. Long, Mosley, Middleton, Bernie, just all of them. And, and this is great for our students, not just the monetary part that was there, but they are at least trying to be healthier because our children now spend their time with these gadgets in their hands and they're not as healthy as we would like them to be. So this, I want to commend them. Also, I want to just send a shout-out to our teachers and welcome them back and pray that they've had a restful, peaceful summer break and they come back all excited and ready to do it all over again. And then again, I was speaking with Renee Huff as the meeting was getting ready to start about the Emory Riddles. I mean, I am, I am just pleased to be a part of Putnam County. I, I told her I never would have left Putnam County to go away to Tallahassee to school had we had some of the opportunities that we are now giving our children. And we were talking about the ones earlier that may not underserved.
Underserved.
I mean, now we can serve them at home. They don't have to go away. They can start as early as 9th grade from what we got the report from Mr. Pickens out at the. So there are just so many opportunities and it will take time for this diamond in the rough to, to become what we know it can become, thanks to everybody that's involved in it. And, Pat, I, I, I just really, you know, hope, yeah, you know.
I do know that.
Yeah, so.
Okay, I would like to give a shout-out to Rhonda and, and the work that she and her people have done on our budget. It is millions and millions of dollars and so many different categories of funding and this goes here and this goes where. And we had one person at our last budget meeting, you know, the public says they're concerned, but then, you know, we don't have much involvement there. But I, it just is, is a daunting process that she has to go through every year. I too would like to welcome all the teachers and staffs back for the first day. I had the opportunity to be involved this morning. I had to be at, at our church, First Baptist, at 6:00 AM this morning. We cooked breakfast. We've kind of adopted Palaka High School through the years and we fed them this morning and it was great to see everyone. There were a lot of new faces at Palaka High School and several of my former students are new faces at Palaka High School and that just does my heart so good. I'm also excited about schools starting back because of football season. It's right around the corner. So we'll be supporting the Raiders and the Rams and the Panthers and, and it's all very exciting. And I just have to give a shout-out for my new grandson, Miles Chandler. He's the best thing that's ever happened to me. And with that, I am finished. So our school board attorney?
As school starts back, we certainly hope that we have 100% attendance. But if there's something less than that and our frequent students, the legal department looks forward to helping in any way we can to protect the FTU campus.
Well, we appreciate what you do.
Okay, and we shot a couple of videos today that we're going to actually, going to be sending out. One, one of them is about our district academic progress and our district initiatives and we're actually sending those to all the schools. We want our teachers and employees to know exactly what we've done over the last year and what, what our goals are for the upcoming year. And just for them to realize, we've got a lot of instructional momentum, academic progress, and we want to build on that. So we want them to be proud of what we've accomplished and just encourage them that this is going to be an even better year. The other video we, we are sending out, we're actually going to send this out really to focus on parents and just to reassure them that our schools are going to be safer than they've ever been. And we've done a lot of school hardening over the summer, you know, and that's a continual progress process, I mean, and our mental health initiative. So we have a lot of things in place that we're going to actually make available so our parents will know, you know, when they send their child to school, they are going to be taken well care of. We want them to be safe and to feel safe. So those are two things to look for. Also, last night, tonight, and Thursday night, we will have our superintendent's advisory council. And if you get a chance to go to that, it's at 6 o'clock tonight in this room and invite you to come out for that. And again, our staff, our teachers returned today and our administrative staff have pretty much fanned out across the district and tried to make as many faculty meetings and department meetings as possible just to welcome our employees back. So it's been a good day and looking forward to a great year. And I won't be there tonight.